Okay. Hello. This is a test. Can you hear me? Okay. 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 Hey Martha, I'm doing a quick test of the microphone. Can you hear us all right?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks. Okay. Hey Robert, can you hear us all right? Yeah, I see he's muted.
You have to unmute yourself for a second. Are you going to put your video or not?
I am video. I'm not getting video in.
Mute yourself unless you have to talk, please.
Robert, does it sound better?
Not getting any.
Not getting anywhere.
Are you okay?
Robert, can you hear me at all?
I don't know. I have no video, no audio. Can anybody hear me? I can't hear you.
We can hear you, Robert.
I will text him.
Hello? Can anybody hear me? I cannot hear you.
All right, I texted.
Are you muted or not?
No, I'm not muted.
Oh, is it high? Put in a chat. Go on a chat and ask them. Yes, I hear you.
Yeah.
Yes, I hear you, she says.
Robert.
Okay, now I can hear you, Jacob. Can you hear me? Hello?
One second, that's not even working.
Now I could hear you for a second, Jacob. Not anymore. Ahem.
Jacob, are you still troubleshooting?
I heard that. Can anyone hear me?
We all hear you, Robert.
Okay, great. Yes, we hear you and there's a feedback loop, so we're trying to fix that.
Okay, well, okay, we're on. Great.
Does this sound okay?
Hello? Can anyone hear me?
Yep.
Robert, we can hear you. There's just a lot of feedback and there's like a loop, so we're trying to see if we can work that out with anything we have here before we just bring the laptop to the desk or yell.
Jacob, I don't get a shot of everyone, anyone into the township. I just get audio. That's just going, I just get audio there.
We can't hear you at all, you're pretty garbled, Robert.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Alright, I can hear you. You get a close up of me, can you see me?
Yes, we can see you. I just think, I don't know, maybe, are you on your Mac?
Yes.
Okay, because we're getting some level of feedback, but I don't know, if this, if this will work as it is, I might just go back to the chair and do the meeting like this.
Alright, well, I don't get feed, I don't get feedback with you and I can hear you loud and clear at the moment, so, and here.
Maybe our speaker.
Now I can see, now I can see the township.
Yeah, yeah, I put the camera back on, but see, I think there's, I don't know what the issue is, because I'm using the MacBook now as the mic and the projector as the speaker, whatever this wireless, you know, the BenQ thing is.
Alright, well, you're coming in. You're coming in loud and clear. You're, Jacob, you're coming in loud and clear.
Yeah.
So, it should be good enough for me to just be able to vote.
Yeah, well, that's what we're gonna have to do, so I'm gonna use that from the Mac and I am move. Yeah, no, I realized I can keep the things in front of it, so give me one more minute and then we'll get going.
Okay.
Presumably the few people that are here can hear Robert okay through the speaker.
Oh, we can see Robert really well.
Alright.
If you guys want to move up into the comfy chairs, it's not really too loud, so please.
Yeah, it's just unfortunate, but it's the best. Alright. You know, let me just walk over there and ask Robert.
Robert, can you hear me okay from over here?
I'm here.
Can you hear me?
It's zooming in on you, I'm sorry, there's nothing to be done. Okay, say something.
Robert, can you hear me?
I can hear you. And I just saw the zoom in, okay? So.
I guess it's gonna be real nice. Better to approve and not text and go over to you. Okay. Let me set that. The best that we're in for tonight. We're gonna figure it out for cars planning permission meeting. Okay, it's 6:15 PM, this is the regular business meeting of the municipal township board supervisors. Please join me in saying that I deliver this.
When the legal system is defined, the United States of America, these liberal republics, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us despite our technical difficulty that bestowed itself upon us about 20 minutes ago. The case members present, myself, Chairman Jacob Pride, Vice Chair Levinon, head of present via Zoom, Supervisor Bronfert, excuse for the evening, Office Manager Phil Haragis, fools that are on Carasack, and Department Leader Justin Kruger from Level 2 hearing. Also, note director that we have Mitch Boyer who's on the panel.
Melanie, Melanie Diaz.
Melanie Diaz.
Jacob, can you speak up more?
Sure, I will.
Okay.
Our original setup almost, but we're gonna talk about that later. Anyway, we have no announcements this evening, no executive sessions, notes. The first order of business is the consideration of the June 8th through June 22nd regular business meeting minutes. At this point, a motion would be in order to adopt both. Do you want to hear said motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion number is the one hundred and second by myself. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next order of business is a public hearing on ordinance 245, creating the office of township manager. How term this is over first listed around Carasack for the opening of the public hearing. Record, of record then, let's start at six seventeen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. Robert, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, very good. Tonight's matter is on for a hearing regarding the creation of a township manager ordinance. This is not a zoning change, this is a standalone ordinance accordingly. It does not require that there be state graphic services or more formal proceedings, this is simply a legislative change that can be done without a synographer present or following more formal procedures, except that the ordinance did require to be advertised and it has been as per the proof of publication that we received from the Pocono Record Organization. And I believe that had published on July 1 of 2022. And standalone ordinances require a minimum advertising pile of seven days before you adopt the ordinance, so obviously advertising on July 1 is more than the seven day window counted today, July 13. The ordinance has been, as I said, advertised, a copy of the ordinance was placed with the newspaper for anyone to review, another copy of the ordinance was forwarded to the Monroe County Law Library for anyone to review. And the ordinance basically creates the position of a township manager, there is none right now as we speak. And that position is an appointment by a majority of the township board supervisors, very similar to the appointment for the solicitor such as myself or the appointment for the engineer or other professional appointments. In this particular regard, the township manager does not need to initially reside at the township. However, reaching the first anniversary of that appointment, the township manager must reside either within the Smithfield Township or within a 25 mile radius of Smithfield Township. And they must continue that residency for the complete tenure of their office. The township manager will be posting a bond in order to protect the township and to promote that the manager will prepare or perform is to her duties in a faithful and correct way. The amount of that bond will be determined by the township or the supervisor by way of resolution. And the premium of that bond will be paid by the township. There will be a compensation, a salary and benefits package for the township manager also to be fixed by resolution. It should be known however, that the appointment of the township manager is a pat will appointment. So that the township manager does not perceive any entitlement to any compensation or benefits other than what may be provided at the pleasure of the board. In case of illness or absence, the manager will have someone qualified to temporarily perform his or her duties. And there are a number of powers and duties as outlined, ordinance basically saying that the township manager is responsible for the day-to-day operations of the township. And decisions by the township manager of course must be approved by the township board supervisors. And the township manager could also be if he or she wanted to, if township treasurer, township secretary, zoning officer or other non-elected office or police officer. And that being said, there is a resolution that will accompany the appointment of the township manager. But we can talk about that more when we get to the ordinance number 245, as per subsection C of the new business, that resolution simply establishes the compensation and benefits package for the manager along with establishing the bond that will be required to be posted. That being said, Mr. Chair, there's nothing further I have to say unless you want me to cover some other area.
I think that's fair enough. At this point, I don't think public comment on this ordinance.
Well, I have a couple of questions. Why, why are we creating this position and what is the cost of the township?
Well, the creation of the position itself imposes no cost, but the creation is to allow more discretion of the day-to-day operations by a singular person. A whole host of other municipalities in Monroe County, particularly Stroud, Toby, Hannah and Pocono Township utilize this method. So it ensures that the board of supervisors is still in the loop and sets the decision curve, but this allows for more written authority for someone to handle something on a daily basis. The costs for the appointment of this board is considering this evening of Julia is a salary of $7,000, which is the difference of about $12,000 salary.
So is this an additional position?
No, the position of office manager won't exist, so that's what she kind of inserted that. Now, this is a lateral transition. Yeah.
So it's not a new headcount?
No.
A new, it's transition of a position as additional.
Correct, there is no additional new capacity for staff after this evening with the budget plan. It's all either replacement or extension or also transitioning onto a promotion.
Right.
Any other public comment? Anything from you, Robert, or do I hear a motion to be closed?
No, just because of audio, Jacob, I'd rather you make the motion and I'll second.
I move that we close the public hearing. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I'm next up, second Mr. Levinon. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing is closed at 6:25 PM. So we will act upon that when we get to new business. Next, we have under plans to act on, we're going to address that of our new business in the future, I'm going to use the agenda so it's clearer as to what's actually going on. So we'll head into our reports. First, we have a explicit report, I know at least one thing is going to be the deemed approval notice by moving correct.
That is correct, this is true. And that being said, that's the only thing I will report on, my written report has been filed and it's comprehensive as it is. Of course, it was filed an hour ago because of my schedule, but that report covers issued all the matters that were taken care of in the month of June. The most important, interesting matter is the deemed approval. I received a letter from an attorney by the name of Devin Myers, NYDRS, of a law firm in York PA, named the firm Seal, Charles, Gia, and George Bay, and Albert Wall Firm. And she tells me that in April she filed or her client, who is NSA Properties LLC, and move-in storage, move-in cell storage filed an application for a public hearing and a $1,500 fee for a special exception use to allow the storage project that is being proposed through a simultaneously filed land development plan and that is before the township planning commission for consideration. Under the law, if she is correct, and she be filed an application. Under the law, if she is correct, and she filed an application on April twenty-eighth, the law required that the zoning hearing board convene a hearing within sixty days of that date. Or if not, have a written extension, either on the record or, again, written extension signed by the applicant. She advised us that no extension was filed, no extension is agreed to, and that more than sixty days has elapsed since the filing of her application. And accordingly, her application, or the client's application, I'm sorry, for a special exception use is deemed approved under the Pennsylvania municipal planning code and the township law ordinance. If you fail to hold that hearing within sixty days or secure extension, the project is deemed approved. And so she's asking that the township acknowledge that deemed approval so that she can move on with other aspects of the matter. That will not affect, of course, the land development plan. That still has to go through the system to be approved. But the underlying special exception use is approved and does not need to be addressed. Now, apparently, at some point, she said that there was some talk that because most of this project was in Stroud Township, I believe, or maybe Delaware Watergate. That it did not require any special exception approval by the township, but apparently that later was changed and approval was required. And again, the matter just, you know, was not scheduled for hearing. I don't know who schedules the zoning hearing board hearings. I don't know whose responsibility that is. So I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus in that regard. But if the hearing was not scheduled and an application was filed and fifteen-hundred dollars was paid and the application was administratively complete, I believe that is going to be deemed approved. But it will be up to the supervisors to make that call.
Well, I would ask this, then. Because the deemed approvals of conditional uses, that gives you, you know, your own chance to try to impose something, right? But is that the same special exception? Or is this to determine who pays for the newspaper ad that says the township to hold here?
A deemed approval simply means the project is approved as a special exception use. You cannot now put conditions on it that train this legislation.
Right. So I guess what I'm asking is, they're just asking us to do it now so they don't have to wait a few more days to do it themselves?
Well, under the law, in theory, they can ask the supervisors to issue a deemed approval. And then if the supervisors do not, I believe the law says that they can, or they have to apply to the newspaper to say to the world that we have a deemed approval. Or it could be reversed. It could be that the supervisor would put the ad in the newspaper. And if that doesn't happen, then another protocol takes effect.
Ron, it's, Ron, it's, the audio is very difficult here, but what I'm gathering from this is that we missed the date. There has been an approval because we didn't act. Is that true?
Yes. The zoning hearing board wants to have scheduled a hearing within sixty days. They applied for a special exception use. So that has to be held in sixty days, just like a conditional use. Now, all the conditional uses, that are the board of supervisors' responsibility. I shoulder the burden in making certain that the ads are in the paper and the matters are controlled.
So.
I don't know whose responsibility that is for the special exception uses, which are heard by the zoning board.
Okay. But all I really want, I want to know is this. I mean, we've had administrative problems with several of these things, but at this point, it's approved, correct?
Correct. Assuming, again, that the application was filed on the date they said, the fifteen-hundred dollars filed on the date they said, and that the application was personally administratively complete. If that was, I think it's a deemed approval at this point.
So Jacob, I guess what we're saying here is we don't have to continue with this, with this agenda item because there's nothing for us to say. It's done, correct?
The only consideration is whether or not it was complete. That is, I'd like to not testify to this one. I did review the letter for correspondence that the attorney for, as I said, who filed with us, but I did not see the physical application myself. And of course, we wouldn't go, because it's a zoning hearing board thing. But they have not had a meeting since, I believe, one of their members passed away. That member did not deny them a call. They haven't met since then. So I mean, I would suspect.
And I want to caution the supervisors that even if the application was not administratively complete, if the applicant wasn't told that in a letter and wasn't given their money back and saying, this application isn't complete. Here's your money back. Here's your application. When it's ready, refile. If that wasn't done, even if the application is not, or was not complete, I don't know if that will be a defense at this stage.
Let's, let's get it off our plate, then.
I mean, I can simply tell the lawyer, I believe you are correct, and thank you very much. And then the land development plan, of course, will continue.
Right. I mean, because this was, this issue was critical to the land development plan because they wanted to expand non-conformant use, right? So now this means that that's.
At least in Smithfield Township, they will be able to do that. What the rule is in Delaware, Watergate, I don't know. But this is similar to someone asking for variance to, let's say, put a pizza shop at their house. So the variance is the underlying use approval, but then they have to file a land development plan to make sure the building is built correctly and all of that.
Correct.
So this is sort of the underlying part of the next phase, which is now land development, which is pending before the township planning.
Anything to say before I?
Yeah. I'm not familiar with this special exception with the transition that the township is going through right now. I'm the one doing the deposits for the township, and I don't believe I've seen many checks for municipal storage or other state properties. So I understand the board needs to take action tonight, but.
Well, it doesn't have to take action tonight. There's no, there's no time limit on it. I just wanted to bring it up so that.
Accepting the necessary potential advertising. But with the board's okay, give me a day. I'll talk with the responsible parties related to the zoning hearing board, see if we can, in fact, find this application. It's also possible that they were notified that it was incomplete for some reason, which would explain why we don't have a check. And then we can go from there. I want to make sure that our mystery processes, we at least know where the application is.
You mean, do that in, in the morning?
I will make sure that it happens by the end of the day tomorrow.
And I've been in touch with the zoning hearing board solicitor, Mr. Durney.
Yes.
And yesterday, when I was dealing with this, and he said this is the first time he's hearing this. So he was never given any package, if you will, regarding a special exception use. And you should know, madam, suit of the manager, perhaps. That a special exception use is no different than a conditional use. It's just, it's the use determined by the zoning board, and they can put conditions on it. And the conditional use is, we supervisors are making the decision. Other than that, it's the same, the rules are the same, the time limits are the same, et cetera. So I don't know why he would not get a packet. I'm zoning board solicitor in three different municipalities. I have a hearing next week. I've got a packet already from the zoning officer saying, here, here's the application. It's a site plan. Here's the rules, you know. So I'm not sure why he may not have received anything, so.
Jacob, am I allowed to ask anything, Jerome?
Go ahead and ask.
Just a curiosity question. What is the special use exception that is being requested? Is it a big deal or it's not a big deal?
This is the one that you've, you've been looking at the land developments for the.
This is the storage area.
For the storage, okay.
Between, well, the one that is, that straddles, it's funny, you have two. They go straddle two municipalities. This one straddles Smithfield and Delaware Watergate. This is the one where they wanted to consolidate a couple of buildings and expand them.
Got it.
Their existing non-conformant use, because I think it's an R one zone and not the commercial zone.
Yeah.
But I, Ten Dollar Watergate, it's village commercial, so two different, so I mean.
Right.
They had to, your, the land development plan you just were saying, or that you have with you can't be approved with that base. But now this, this was approved, so.
And then, you should know that special exception uses, the cases are a little funny because all the cases say the special exception use is neither special or an exception. It is the use that has been approved by the township or the borough to say it is permitted in this district provided certain special conditions are met. So, so it's not even something you could really deny, if you will, if the ordinance has been met.
Right.
In this case, fortunately, you don't have big development in the township. It's not creating a lot of consternation in the sense that the township part is just a little bit of this. And perhaps our engineer could make it a bit clearer as to what part is in this township. But fortunately, it's not.
We have an engineer for both of this.
I am.
Yes.
Yeah. So a majority of the property is within the water gap. There's a small portion in Smithfield. And the small portion that they were going to expand exceeded the zoning.
Thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
I understand the bureaucratic part of it. That was very clear. I want to understand the practical part of it.
Sure. Yeah, no worries.
All right. So other than that, Mr. Chair, there's really nothing else to report on other than usual matters that come across.
At this point, I would move that we acknowledge the deemed approval.
Or do you, or do you want to wait until?
I was going to say conditioned upon determination by the office manager. Wait here a second, Robert. Can you hear me, Robert?
I'm sorry, what?
I said, I made a motion to acknowledge the deemed approval conditioned upon determination by the office manager.
I second that.
I'm voting by myself, second, Mr. Robyn. Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Can you?
No, I don't have any. Unless you have any questions, I don't have anything.
I have a question, any questions? I'm sure we'll have lots of, depending what happens tomorrow.
Yes.
That is the best report I've heard.
Like that report?
You get it, I mean, right. All right, perfect. So next, under new business, is the consideration for the approval of the preliminary final land development plan for Eagle Valley Sub Storage.
Yes, Mr. Chair. At the time of the planning commission last, Eagle Valley representative, Mr. Frappasso, signed an agreement for conditional approval form. That basically states that the plan is recommended for conditional preliminary and final plan approval based upon certification from the boardhead, regional or other authorities availability to come up with capacity. Monroe County Castoration District for reviewing approval, that any other permits that are required to be issued, that there be compliance with the township engineer review letter of May twenty-four, twenty-twenty-two. There be a unification and merger via sprout township, because again, some of this property is a sprout township. That there be an improvements agreement with security acceptable to the township engineer and township solicitor. That the monuments tend to mark those that are to be set in the field and certified and writing by the applicant center here. And the salvage waivers are to be noted on the plan and the plan to be signed and the plan to be notarized. So with those conditions, the township planning commission would recommend approval. And those conditions have also been signed in writing and acknowledged in writing by the applicant center or the applicant himself in the superclass.
Okay, thanks. And I do have a question.
No.
That I make a motion that we grant approval of Eagle Valley Sub Storage preliminary file and development plans in accordance with the planning commission's condition in ten.
Second.
This is approval form dated
May twenty-six, two thousand and two.
Second. Can I second that motion?
I was going to say that.
Yeah. All right. Motion by myself, second, Mr. Robyn. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we can do something a little more fun. We're going to have a speaker.
Oh, Diaz, yes.
Melanie Diaz from F C Pocono. So I'm going to go share the screen so we can see the pictures.
Sorry, actually texted Shannon an update.
No worries. Okay.
All right. So, yeah, you can, sure.
Thanks. I, I'll try to speak clearly. I think I'm a little closer to the mic, so people online can hear me. My name is Melanie Diaz, and I am here on behalf of F C Pocono. We run an intramural, an intramural soccer program for the kids throughout Monroe County, specifically in Smithfield, middle Smithfield townships. We're very grateful that we have the ability to use the soccer fields here at Waterfront Park. I know, I'm sure it's no surprise that after the pandemic, it's, just these programs have taken such a hit. We have more kids than coaches and time and everything else. So one of the pain points that we experience, especially with the different schedules and with a lot of our volunteers, is equipment and trying to make sure that all the safety equipment and, you know, the, the pennies and soccer balls, that there's sufficient equipment there for the coaches, the volunteer coaches, to be able to use for the various age levels. So we would like to request the ability to place a shed at some location in the park. Pictures are up on the screen. I'll scroll through them in a minute. This shed will be provided by Kramer Sheds. The only thing we would need to know if approved is where the supervisors would like that placed. And Kramer Sheds will take care of the delivery, as well as any potential leveling of the ground if needed. There will be a lock on the shed, and the dimensions of the shed are, it's an eight-by-eight with sixty-four square feet of usable space inside. It is made from wood and pre-cut, primed, painted. I'll go through these pictures now, which were provided, so that would be the front of the shed where we would have the lock placed on it. Like, this is a side view. There's another view which shows you what the interior looks like. Just another view of the stain. Try to paint the good picture for you guys. That's the top of it. And I believe that is it for my request.
I've got one follow-up question for you. Before speaking with you, I believe I spoke with Kurt, and he said that he was interested in having this place at Minnising Park. So is it going to Minnising, or are you interested in placing it at Waterfront?
I was under the impression it was at Waterfront. I think Minnising is where our travel team typically practices, but if you give me one second, I can confirm that now.
And Lord, for the record, we have had Kurt in contact with our zoning officer. They were discussing preliminarily where they wanted to put the shed, and Kent feels that there will be no issue with rough placement. So at this point, it'll be on the board's onus to break permission for F C Pocono to apply for the permit. And because it is township property, doing a township improvement, I would suggest that they recommend waiving the fee, because the township will be paying ourselves for this improvement.
It has been clarified that we are making the request for Waterfront.
Wow.
If that becomes an issue and we don't know where to put it, it's approved of my.
It's actually really nice, right?
Yeah.
That's it.
And we'll vote in a second.
So it looks like, just for further clarification and probably a future meeting, ideally, we'd like one place at each, but of course, we're on a budget. So for now, our primary focus is on Waterfront, and then when we raise the funds to, you know, we'll make the request for Minnising.
I have no issue with the response made. I played for F C Pocono for like seven or eight years as a kid. You know, services that I played for, but I also played for Sherman Ditterman at Free Fox, so.
Are we, are we ready for a motion on this?
I am.
Okay, I, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this with the proviso that the township will donate the paint and labor to paint this in the team colors.
Love it. Robert, is that, is that you volunteering? Yeah. There's no hammer, so we can't get hurt this time. All right. Would you, would you amend your motion to include the township waives the fee? For the zoning.
Are we voting?
Yes, I amend your motion to include waiving the fee for the zoning application.
I'm, it's garbled, but I approve whatever it is, okay? Whether it's my motion or your amended motion, I'll approve it. It's just very difficult to hear.
Motion by Robert, second by myself, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you all so much. I appreciate it. Yeah, for what it's worth, my youngest in the program is the youngest of four and I meant I have my oldest is graduating college already. And somehow I got separated into being a coach this last season and now Shannon's pulling me in and I'm like, I was almost in the clear, but I thank you all for your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Good luck, Coach.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, next item is ordinance number two forty five, the establishment of the office township manager. Any last public comment before we, before I entertain a motion on ordinance number two forty five?
Sounds like a good move.
All right, I appreciate the comments. Thanks. All right, I move that we adopt ordinance number two forty five. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Me by myself, second by Mr. Lovin, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Next is resolution number five oh six, which is the appointment of the township manager and related matters. So it establishes the, in the statute where the township has the authority and means to appoint the township manager, it recognizes the work that Julia Hylicka has done as our office manager. And it recognizes that she demonstrates the qualifications within the township manager ordinance that we have just adopted. And it also includes the compensation as I described to mix, only changes a salary. And it also includes twenty one days paid time off in accordance with our personnel manual. And it also sets the bond at, for her performance at three million dollars, which is the same as the township treasures and that will be paid for by the township's general fund. Any, anything from you, Robert?
Are we ready for a vote?
I would move that we adopt resolution four, five oh six. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Me by myself, second by Mr. Lovin. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Congratulations, Julie.
Yes.
Thank you for your trust in me and this position and my opportunity to serve the township and the county more.
All right, sounds great. I think you've been working on the last two years. It's not that easy. You came here two months or three months after the start of the pandemic. I got here three months before. It's been a hell of a time since then, but you brought in, you know, working with a lot of great people and we're winning a million dollars and I have to move this place forward and I think everyone can be proud of that.
You have to hear.
Right. Next is the consideration to hire Lucas Di Bartolo as the budget and finance manager for the offer of June twenty third, two thousand and twenty two, with a start date to begin on July twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty two. For everyone's understanding, this position replaces any, a position that had previously been eliminated. And also comes with paying benefits commensurate with that as we offered in our last meeting. We made an offer to Mr. Lucas Di Bartolo, who is extraordinarily qualified, would work as manager for special initiatives that had Pocono out of the way and a litany of other nonprofits and quasi-governmental entities as well as local businesses too.
And Mr. Chair, what's the effect that they are taking from all the growth in the business?
July twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty two.
Thank you.
You know, I move that we hire Lucas Di Bartolo as budget and finance manager for the offer of June sixth, sorry, June twenty third, two thousand and twenty two. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, second by Mr. Lovin, any questions?
And all for create salary benefits and all those other.
Correct.
Nothing is missing that we have to come back and we look at this and there should be all inclusive.
Yeah, same exact. The only difference between his and Julia's is the power rate is different and then the paid time off is, I think, nineteen days. One in favor?
Sorry, what?
I said all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Next, the consideration to hire Steve Manhart to road crew. We've had a position open for a while at this point. Mr. Manhart has demonstrated all the credentials necessary, including in the number that our current crew does not have, which is great because they can all work together and they all bring a special skill set. A lot of you probably know him. He's done extraordinarily well at Framers. Framers has since been purchased and his expertise became a commodity and we are lucky enough to have him. So I would move to hire Steve Manhart to the road crew, the start date to begin July eighteenth in accordance with the agreement with Teamster Vocal seven, seven, three. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Me by myself, second by Mr. Lovin, any questions?
I do have not a question but a comment, just for anyone that is listening. The filling of this position fills the township's plan to put more money towards our road repairs. This will permanently increase our road crew from a group of five with a roadmaster to a group of six with a roadmaster. So we have the ability to do more for our assets.
Excited about that. So we can get to more favoring now, which is already well underway this season. So we're excited about that. I said, all in favor?
Hi.
Fine. Next consideration, leaf truck quotes. This has been emailed to us. We have a grant that pays for the majority of this, so we had to do a fire. We had to buy new leaf trucks, fortunately. We're using our settlement funds from the insurance to match our payment. However, because of the ever increasing prices of things, we incorporate price gouging or otherwise has resulted in the truck that was supposed to cost two hundred and eleven thousand to now cost two hundred and forty three thousand dollars. So this is not committing to a payment today, but this is ordering the truck so the price doesn't go up further. We would not pay for it. So I move that we approve the leaf truck quote in accordance with the CoStar's agreement for the twenty twenty four Peterbilt twenty, two twenty leaf truck. Do I hear a second?
Hi. Hello?
Robert?
Yeah, second. I can't hear you very well, so.
I was asking for a second on the motion to agree to the quote we received for the new leaf truck.
Right, second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Lovin, any question? All in favor?
Hi.
This is what's in my packet. This is the packet with this problem.
Yeah. It's gonna look real nice. We hope. That incident. Uh, next is the consideration to approve leaf collection for our neighbors in Delaware Water Gap. So Delaware Water Gap earlier had four square miles of roads. This is part of a, you know, neighborly cooperation with Delaware Water Gap to offer the future exchange of personnel to potentially do roadwork and also respond to any emergencies and the like depending on what each other's needs are. So I'd like to thank, you know, Council President Jamie Levy for value in the regional relationship between Water Gap and accordingly, I spoke to Ed McCormack, our roadmaster, saying it would be no issue for us to do the leaf collection for Delaware Water Gap. So I would move that we approve the leaf collection for Delaware Water Gap to begin this fall.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Lovin, any question?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Next, we've received a proposal from Middle Smithfield Township in regards to a fire and EMS study. Proposals for, to explore the future needs of our local emergency services that includes Bushkill EMS which serves two thirds of the township and as far as EMS, suburban EMS which serves for towns. And then our three fire companies, Shawnee Fire Company, Delaware Water Gap Fire Company and Marshall Street Fire Company. So the proposal, you know, outlines a comprehensive study for Middle Smithfield, Price Township. There's our Middle Smithfield Township, Price Township, Smithfield Township, Delaware Water Gap and Little Water Gap Borough, as well as the emergency services that serve each of us. Which also includes Bushkill Emergency, Delaware Water Gap Police if they are first responders in an incident. So the idea is that we're going to have an inventory of what each branch has and what they will need in the future and have the Miss Baddies can cooperate in terms of the funding mechanism to support them. So this proposal for us is from JLN Associates. I'm not going to commit the township to a specific fee structure, but I would like to obligate us to participate in the study. The total cost as proposed was only twenty seven thousand dollars split between those four entities. Anybody have any questions on that?
No, I'm looking at the packet again, Mr. Chair. Seventeen, that's the, that is the total price of the division. So I can verify if I take the word correctly.
Yep. Do I hear a motion on committing Smithfield's interest in participating? We have a motion, Robert, do I hear a second?
Second.
I'll second by Mr. Lovin, any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Next is a brief discussion on the GCED LSA Monroe wind application. This is for the local share account funds generated by Mount Airy Casino that's split between us and several other counties in our region. That, that's two percent of the gross, of the gross total of what they generate. There's a couple of big companies in the past. The current grant round opened on July first and closes on September thirtieth. I don't want to have a lengthy discussion about this. I think this is more pressing issues and we have more time to address this. But I would like to see, Robert, you know, if, or when you're interested in township exploring the branch for the Waterfront Park House potentially perhaps on it or, you know, examine what, what preparing is. I'd like to keep your character, but I'd like to see what your thoughts are in terms of whether or not we should look at applying for the grant with that money. Robert, did you hear any of that on the park house?
Okay, it's very difficult to hear you, but are you looking for a second on that? I can't hear.
Yeah, I.
Garbled.
Zoom even more on you.
Okay, Julia's gonna zoom in more on me.
Our apologies again.
Okay, that was, that was easier to hear, actually.
All right.
So let me, let me say for the record that I've read through the whole agenda, so I'm familiar with it. So when I'm asking when you need a second, it's, it's on matters that I'm quite familiar with.
Right, absolutely. Yeah, so I, I was just seeing if you were interested in exploring the LSA grant application for the park house, be it revitalization or expansion.
Definitely.
Missy, is that something that Lovin would be able to get us a proposal for if we were decided to?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we've done many of those.
Okay, great. All right, so we will discuss that with certainty at our, our next meeting.
Okay.
So yeah, if you want to. Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you very much, Missy. Next is the consideration for the letter of credit release for a Wyndham maintenance building. The only thing outstanding from them is a invoice due to township of two hundred and eighty dollars and two cents. This has been a fun issue to our staff and professionals who have a chance to work on. So am I missing anything else on this one?
So the, just to give everyone a little bit of this backup, Wyndham Destinations approached us. One of our local banks is holding a letter of credit for a project. At this time, our engineers have reviewed the project and have deemed it complete. So the only thing stopping the township from releasing this letter of credit is that outstanding invoice that we did just send them. We're not waiting on a payment per se for the two hundred and eighty dollars and two cents. Because this has been delayed a little bit with the changes that are going on in the township. It is my request to the board of supervisors that you conditionally approve the release of the irrevocable letter of credit conditioned upon the township receiving those funds.
So moves, do I hear a second?
Yeah.
Me by myself, second by Mr. Lovin, any comment? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Almost at the end here, but.
We should know, Mr. Chair, that the our township manager prepared a lease agreement that can be used in the future if it appears to be job of that.
Look at all these feathers we've got.
It is a, it is an investment immediately to prepare these splits, but it may administer processes much faster in the future when we're no longer needing to recreate document after document for the same project.
Not to keep re-inventing.
Sounds great. All right, next is the consideration for the approval of the September eleventh National Memorial Trail signage. Julia had already spoken with our roadmaster and they stated that our crew would perform the install, installation of these signs. And the only provision in there is that we have to wait on, cannot approve for the overall project.
And because this is a multi- municipality trail that this will be going through, the creators of the September eleventh National Memorial Trail signage, to state in compliance with their guidelines, need approval to put the trail through Smithfield Township. So the board will be voting on allowing the trail and approving the trail to exist within the township. And then also saying that our road crew will install the two signs that are located in Smithfield Township.
Thank you. So moves, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Lovin, any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Finally, we have the consideration for the award of the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three material contracts to Eureka Stone Quarry in accordance with their CoStar's bid. So I make motion that we award the bid according. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Me by myself, second by Mr. Lovin, any questions? All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Okay, is there anything? Okay, is there anything left for the board of supervisors' report before we proceed paying bills? Do you have anything you wanted to talk about, Robert?
I'm sorry, say again.
Do, did you have anything that you wanted to submit for the board of supervisors' report from yourself?
No.
I do not either, aside from I'm very proud of the moves the township is making tonight and I look forward to the future. That said, uh, bills to be paid, we have uh, general fund bills and highway bills for a grant total of seventy eight thousand, one hundred and ninety five dollars and sixty two cents. And that includes typical expenses for the current accounting transition, uh, newspaper advertisements, legal bills, engineering bills and parts to make repairs to our uh, our machinery and our, our vehicle. I make a motion that we pay bills.
Second.
Second by Mr. Love, any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Finally, we have public comments. Does any member of the public wish to make any comments? All of you are on the seat. Hi.
Neither of them.
Okay. So I move that we resume this meeting at seven oh nine P M. Do I hear a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. We are adjourned. Thank you everybody for joining us.
Thank you.